Calling to order the business meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six. Role call, please.
This is Angulova. Is Bayless here?
Here.
He's virtually.
Here remotely.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on agenda items this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we move on to presentations.
All right, we have a few presentations this evening. We're gonna start out with some Diamond Awards, and that is where we recognize our staff for going above and beyond and sparkling like a diamond. And our first awards will be presented by West Oak Intermediate School Principal, Mr. Kurt Preble.
Good evening, everyone, board members, guests. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm gonna have to put my glasses on. All right. It is my privilege to nominate Dora Baron and Elizabeth Malgoza for the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Diamond Award. Each and every day, both Mrs. Baron and Mrs. Malgoza go above and beyond to ensure that our students, our families, and our staff have what they need to have a successful experience at West Oak Intermediate School. Whether it is a last-second text or phone call to secure substitutes, applying Band-Aids and ice packs to students, helping to cover recess, or communicating with parents on a student's estimated time of arrival home, Dora and Ellie do it all, including rerouting lunches delivered to West Oak Intermediate School office, but for the middle school staff. However, it isn't just a day-to-day chaos that they both so elegantly control. It is how they both create an atmosphere of a calm, welcoming, and helpful environment. Families truly enjoy their experience coming to the WOOS office and know that they will receive the care and attention, no matter what brings them to our school. This climate of caring, welcoming, and service-first has been built and sustained by both Mrs. Baron and Mrs. Malgoza throughout the year. They set the standard for how a school office should look, sound, and operate, and our families and staff are grateful for it. Both Dora and Ellie are keys to successful building operations, staff communication, and my ability to lead West Oak Intermediate School. They are truly deserving of this nomination. Congratulations. Come on up.
And I love, I can add to this, I remember they're the first people that I see when I walk in every single day, smile, and I was three times more than I would like. Thank you guys so much. It's an amazing job. Congratulations. I love that you coordinated.
I know. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you and share how happy and proud I am to work for District Seventy-Six. Thank you. As with Dora, I agree as well. It has honestly been a pleasure working here, working with all my amazing coworkers, all the district leadership team. And thank you, and I can't wait to just, you know, continue to grow and stronger bonds and stuff. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I am Julie Pecoraro. I am the instructional coach at West Oak Middle School, and I nominated Nicole Lynch. She is our EL Extraordinaire Resource Teacher. Recently, I was asked to, for the IRC, nominate a teacher that goes above and beyond for our students, and the first person that came to my mind for our EL students is Nicole. Let me see what I wrote. Nicole goes above and beyond with her students. She cares about each and every one of them. She strives to help them in all aspects of their day. Whether they're in her class or a different class, she takes the time to check in with them and make sure that they have a successful day. She is passionate about teaching and making sure her ESL students have equitable opportunities to be successful in their academic journey. She is always willing to work with every student in need, no matter what. She is a role model for her students, whether she is explaining things in their native language or working on having them practice their English skills. With creative projects and her innovative style, all of our teachers look up to her and the way she treats her students with respect and how collaborative she is with her peers. She is truly a gem and such an asset to our school. She deserves to know what an amazing job she is doing and how appreciated she is. Nicole.
Yeah, I would just like to say what an honor and a privilege it is to work with you all and to serve this community and our students and our families. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
And one of the things that I ordered, we had a higher order just for everybody, is a steps tool. So we can put it here if you want to.
Thank you so much. You know me so well, right? Yes. You were thinking of me. Mary has been my partner for the last three years, but it seems like a lifetime, right? So I am thrilled to nominate my fourth-grade dual partner, Mary Pat Monahan, for the District Seventy-Six Diamond Award. She is deserving of this award and recognition, and I am so lucky and grateful to have the opportunity every day to learn, collaborate with such an amazing and inspirational ally. Mary's kindness and support is exemplary. She is one of the most caring, sweetest people I know. She always has a smile on her face and is willing to strengthen, comfort, and encourage others. Nonetheless, her contributions during our planning or curriculum development are a shining example of how extraordinary she is. Mary's leadership skills embody and model a true leader. Mary is a leading light. She is knowledgeable, inclusive, and has the ability to communicate effectively. Moreover, she is thoughtful, considerate, a great listener, and an exemplary educator. I am blessed. I have the privilege and opportunity to have a dual partner, to have as a dual partner such an incredibly wonderful and inspiring colleague, accomplice in changing the world, one leader at a time, and one mathematician at a time. Mary's willingness to take risks, be innovative, embrace change, have provided our community with unforgettable, noteworthy, cultural, and educational enriched experiences that will serve as a model to others. For this and for so many other reasons, I am filled with gratitude for the opportunity to nominate, recognize, and share these sparkling attributes with such a remarkable fellow mentor. Thank you, Mary.
So when I got hired by Kurt, this was really like coming home for me, literally. So I feel very connected to the community here, and I'm leaving in just a few weeks. So this is bittersweet, but it's still wonderful. Everyone at West Oak makes my job easy, so Cindy especially. And I told Kurt the other day, this is the high watermark for me. So wherever I land, nobody will compare, really. So thank you all. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. Well, everyone is really excited here. The summer update, so they had to move to the top of the presentation here, and we only have really one slide. So all I wanted to do was just provide an update on what has been planned, and I'll just wait for a second. I just want to provide an update on what's been planned so far and really just highlight the district's efforts to seek out all federal and state grants to fund these projects. So every one of these has been identified as a priority, and then we try to find a grant that matches that priority. So at Diamond Lake, using the fifty-fifty matching grant, that's from the State Board of Ed, we're looking to do a chimney repair, some exterior tuck pointing, and replace some of the exterior grills, more of a beautification project, but the chimneys in disrepair, and so we're looking to shorten that out and do some mechanical work just to make sure it's meeting current code. And then using the School Violence Prevention Program Grant, that's a Department of Justice grant we were awarded at both campuses. We were gonna replace the camera system. It's several years old now, and it's, as with all technology, it sunsets pretty quickly in terms of the quality that's available. So not only would we be replacing existing camera systems, we'd be adding, I think it's twenty additional cameras at West Oak and then roughly ten or fifteen at Diamond Lake as well. And so they have a lot more capabilities and, you know, license plate reader, things like that. This technology will help us out to reduce vandalism. Then using, the only two projects that'd be utilizing local funds is repairing the service road here at Diamond Lake. That is in several years coming now, so we're gonna be excited. The maintenance guys will certainly be excited about that one. And then the staff restrooms at West Oak, we renovated those internally, I'd say five or six years ago, and we used a little bit more of residential fixtures. So we're gonna be replacing those commercial fixtures and doing that project in-house. So it'll be a very low cost. And last, we have, using the Community Partnership Grant that we were awarded, we are gonna do some exterior classroom-type projects at both West Oak Intermediate and Diamond Lake. So Diamond Lake, we would be renovating the playground to modernize it, expand the play surface. Right now, it's pea gravel, a lot of old equipment. It's been around for at least twenty years. Remove that, add some gazebo-type areas where we could have some outdoor learning spaces, and add a soccer field out there as well, like a little turf field where kids can run around. And at West Oak Intermediate, we have some plans on doing an outdoor gazebo as well, add some exterior parking lot lights. That's gonna be kind of a security upgrade as well. And we could use that space for outdoor events, the De La Muero's event, any PTO-related events, things like that. And then plan to be making another exterior-type classroom, planting some natural grasses, some bench seating, add some kind of weatherproof learning surfaces like whiteboards, things like that. So that way, intermediate can go outside and expand their learning spaces. So several of these projects are out to bid still, and several of these have already been approved. So all projects are planned on being completed this summer with the exception of a door and key replacement project that may extend until October, just based on lead times. So any questions about the projects themselves?
I have a question, but it's tangential. For West Oak, is the parking lot getting repaired?
Parking lot is definitely gonna be repaired. So we're in the process of getting quotes on that one. They've ranged from one point five million to five hundred thousand. So we're trying to tighten that.
Real cheap, yeah.
Trying to tighten that number up a little bit, but if anybody's driven there recently, the pothole, the never-ending pothole, I think, has been repaired. So that's, that's, that is the biggest one. So yeah, that's gonna be planned for Summer Twenty-Four Project. We'll have to go out to bid for that, and we'll be presenting information to.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, really just the effort by the maintenance department as well to do these projects locally and all the grants we've been able to be awarded. We seek out these aggressively. So the Community Partnership Grant and the School Violence Prevention were very, very competitive state and local grants that we were awarded. So thank you very much. I'll get the summer project update pictures as we go along.
Thanks, Mr. Rogers. I know you and Mr. Thibodeau, Mr. Caliato, as well as Fisher have worked closely together on these grants and feeding up these projects and being fiercely responsible and conservative. So we appreciate your teamwork and presenting. Thank you. And our next and last presentation this evening are department updates from Technology and Communications. So that will be from Mr. Munson. And then we're gonna transition into Student Services, where Dr. Olson will start out the presentation, and then we have three amazing special ed teacher leaders that are going to complete it for us. So welcome, Mrs. Rudd, Mrs. Rogers, and Mrs. Karenson.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. So to start off the technology update, I'm gonna focus on a few areas. Our technology services, our cybersecurity, instructional technology, then transition over to a little bit of communications. My first slide, I'm talking about our technology obsolescence planning. So just an understanding of that is it's a multi-year view of collaboration with our finance and curriculum departments to be able to plan for any sort of infrastructure, staff, student devices, longevity, copier securities, and other systems that are involved. So it's just a long-range plan to look at our current year or upcoming year in multi-years in the future to ensure that we have continuous of services, hardware, and we're asking the questions that are needed when it comes to teaching and learning to support the entire environment. Two areas that we're looking at this upcoming year, Mr. Rogers already mentioned about the security camera upgrades. So as to continue that conversation, our security cameras are roughly five to six years old, so they're at time for obsolescence to turn them over. The, we're looking at something that's a lot more better resolution, advertise to not put a strain on our network, which is always great. Storage capabilities are always wonderful as well, so allow some cloud-based solutions so that if we ever need to be able to provide temporary access to authorities if something happens, because there are security cameras that we have the capabilities to do so, which is fantastic. Another part, which I think is always beneficial, is our communication. So I'd say the one last piece of hardware that I have since seven years being here, this is the last piece of hardware I have not turned over here. So this is exciting. So we updated our backbone for our voice of our IP system. So it's all our phone systems that we have here. We incorporated fiber that goes through our buildings also to a continuous connection so that all the framework has been made years prior. So now our handsets, the wonderful handsets we get to call home or make contacts in between each other here. So we are, this is actually a decent, this is actually the exact model we're looking at to replace all the handsets. So it'd just be plug-and-play, a little bit of programming and licensing, but all of our staff, and our front office staff, they left, but our front office staff that was here, that they'll actually have upgraded models so that we have ensuring to have crisp communication on all technology for all of our hardware here. Not a significant amount of items, but over the course of the summer, it's gonna be relatively busy, as always, for the technology department. Cybersecurity is one of those things that you hear or you should hear quite often, and whether it's in your professional or in your personal lives is something that I know that everybody at this table hears me talk about way too often, but it's extremely important. And we take proactive measures when it comes to continuous improvement and making sure that we're relevant in the world of cybersecurity. So a few, three elements that we updated over the course of the year in collaboration with the Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative Partner, CLIC. We connected up with Secure Halo as a partner of theirs to be able to review our incident response plan. So we have an incident response plan when it comes to what happens in the buildings, but this is more for technology services and cybersecurity. So if something was to happen, network went down, or whether it's a minor element to a major element, it's a full documentation and almost a game plan essentially of how we approach those different items that could happen. So it's always, we always had something like that, but it was great that CLIC offered this opportunity that came as part of their yearly professional development. So we met and reviewed our IRP to ensure that we are up to date. And this is a document that will be always continually to evolve. It never finishes, nor should it, because in the world we live in, in 2023, it's always gonna be different every year that we live here. So that was a great experience. It was something we continue to document and review and practice as a department. And then last, no. No, it's not last. Actually, my second bullet point. I feel like I was talking about the first one for a while. So the one thing that in a world of cybersecurity as well is that we have endpoint protections in all of our staff devices, as well as our servers as well, which has been fine. That's there. It's a basic element of cybersecurity. We are migrating to a managed detection response system through Center of Internet Security who utilizes CrowdStrike. And that is something that's gonna continuously monitor our staff devices and our network just to make sure that there's nothing that's happening. It's happening twenty-four seven, which is great to know. And I've heard from counterparts in other districts across the entire state, which, you know, organizations I'm part of, that they have utilized a similar service, and it's beneficial because these things do happen, and it happens at random times. So it's always nice to ensure that we are not staying static, that we're continuing to involve in our cybersecurity practices and partners. And last but not least, and it's not really as fun to talk about, but we always want to make sure we have continuity services. We've always had backup and disaster recovery of our operational servers that happen here. We're just making a quick change over the summer that makes what's changing from backup to, it's gonna change to backup to, I'm sorry, it's just replication. I apologize.
We uh incorporated fiber that goes through our buildings also, so it's a continuous connection so that all the framework has been made uh years prior. So now our handsets, the wonderful handsets, we get to call home or make contacts in between each other here. Um so we are, this is actually a decent mo- this is actually the exact model we're looking at to replace all the handsets. So it'd just be plug-and-play, a little bit of programming and licensing. But all of our staff will in our in our front office staff, they left, but our front office staff that was here, that they'll actually have upgraded models so that we have uh ensuring to have uh crisp communication and on all technology for all of our hardware here. Not a significant amount of items, but over the course of the summer, it's gonna be relatively busy as always for the technology department. Um cybersecurity is one of those things that you hear or you should hear quite often, and and whether it's in your professional or in your personal lives is something that uh I know that everybody at this table hears me talk about way too often, but it's extremely important. And uh we take proactive measures when it comes to continuous improvement and making sure that we're relevant in the world of cybersecurity. So a few three uh three elements that we updated over the course of the year in collaboration with the collective liability insurance cooperative partner, CLIC. Um we connected up with Secure Halo as a it's a partner of theirs to be able to review our incident response plan. So we have an instant response plan when it comes to what happens in the buildings, but this is more for technology services and cybersecurity. So if something was to happen, network went down, or whether it's a minor element to a major element, it's a full documentation and almost a game plan essentially of how we how we um approach those different items that could happen. So it's always though, we always had something like that, but it was great that CLIC offered this opportunity that came as part of their yearly uh professional development. So we met and reviewed our our IRP to ensure that we are up to date. And and this is a document that will be always continually to evolve. It never finishes it nor should it. Because in the world we live in, in twenty twenty-three, it's always gonna be different every year that we live here. So that's this, that's uh that was a great experience. It was something we continued to document and review and practice as a department. And then last, uh no. Oh, no, it's not last, actually my second bullet point. I feel like I was talking about the first one for a while. So the one thing that we in the world of cybersecurity as well is that we have endpoint protections in all of our staff devices, as well as our servers as well, which has been fine. Um that's there. It's a it's a basic element of cybersecurity. We are migrating to a managed uh detection response system uh through um Center of Internet Security who utilizes CrowdStrike. Um and that is something that's gonna continuously monitor our staff devices and our in our network, just to make sure that there's nothing that's happening. It's happening twenty-four seven, which is great to know. And I've heard from counterparts in other districts across the entire state, which, you know, uh organizations I'm part of, that they have utilized uh a similar service and it's beneficial because these things do happen and it happens at random times. So it's always nice to ensure that we are not staying static, that we're continuing to involve in our cybersecurity practices and partners. And last but not least, and it's not really as fun to talk about, but we always want to make sure we have continuity services. We've always had backup and disaster recovery of our operational servers that happened here. Uh we're just making a quick change over the summer that makes what's changing from backup to uh it's gonna change to backup to um I'm sorry, it's just a replication. I apologize. So replication so that if something did happen, we could we could spin it up and we could continue services so that things like we take, we don't actually take a grant anymore. When it comes to electric, it comes to water, it comes to plumbing. Fortune, unfortunately and fortunately for everybody, internet is right up there with everybody. So we want to make sure those operations do happen. So this is a few updates we have in the world of uh technology services. As I transition to instructional technology, there's two elements we're looking at, the ISTI, the International Society of Technology and Education. Big organization when it comes to instructional technology has always been a part of uh how we plan and develop professional development. But as we continually devolve and we could collaborate with personal learning, uh per uh personal learning that happens at District Seventy-Six uh over the course of the summer, and next year, we are going to continue to promote the ISTI standards, not only for our students but educators as well, and how that can make a a good through-line connection. And it could assist with not only personalized learning, but also the standards that our students and our staff are implementing themselves as well. Um we'll see a lot of that in collaboration with Mr. Smith, our instructional technology coach, over the course of the summer for the summer professional development and leading into the upcoming school year. Um we're all used to what's called an acceptable usage policy, my bullet point two. We are actually gonna look into next year of being IT committee focused, and I'm not talking informational technology. I'm talking overarching of just instructional, informational, and responsible transitioning from an acceptable usage policy to a responsible usage policy. And it's not a what you can and can't do idea, but overarching when it comes to a responsible usage policy is just ensuring that we have a positive, purposeful, understandable, reliable policy that's put together, that's not put together by teachers, not put together by the administrators, but is a collective committee that's connected with staff, administrators, students, just to ensure that we all kind of agree upon a policy that's reliable, that continues to grow with our students as not only as a as a citizen, but as a digital citizen as well. And it's important to involve those stakeholders through that. So I'm very actually really excited to start that process next year with our students and our staff just to develop a responsible usage policy and implement that in for the upcoming school year. Now, as we transition away from technology, we focus a little bit on communications. I always like to share about our metrics. Metrics are always great to look at, and I put on the on the screens here a few noteworthy metrics that I've placed here. And if the link within the pro- the PDF there has my monthly report, every month you'll receive a report that has all of our monthly metrics when it comes down to all the items we're seeing here and much more. So our met- and I'm focusing on some of these, some of these will be baseline metrics, and some of them will be showing some growth here. So our mass communications, we use School Messenger to do our email, our phone, our text blast that we have here. Uh our monthly average is current school year is about forty-two emails a month and about seventeen text messages a month as well. Average is slightly the little bit different per month based off of the amount of events that we're promoting and also in collaboration with things like our P T O events, board meetings, so on so forth. Now, if I was to compare it from years prior, I would say it'd be a little bit of a dip because we're not doing as much COVID notifications, which happened in years prior. So this, I'd say more of a baseline understanding, but if you can say keeping our families informed is extremely important to us, and we want to make sure that we're providing enough emails to uh at our own family's leisure to be able to view it based off of the events that are happening. As we move into social media, as we all know in our daily lives, sometimes we want information to organically come to us through our own scrolling through social media. And so one of the the four that we utilize quite often, this looks at, those are our followers. I am happy to share and also my metrics report that we have about eight to ten percent growth from the start of the year. I'm talking August just to last month. That we have, we're continuing to grow our followers, which is great. Twitter had a little dip when Elon Musk joined the group, but uh that kind of worked itself out there as well, which is kind of fun to see. So uh it's always nice to see our our growth in our community, in our virtual community and social media following. Another thing when it comes to communications is that sometimes not directly communicating towards you, we want to after actively seek it out. And so I just did our average monthly page views for our homepage. And uh through my month, uh sorry, my metrics report, you could actually see our top ten uh each month pages that get the most amount of hits each time. And it's great to see as Dr. Cunningham mentioned in previous meetings that are, you know, are join our team, the the area where people to see what positions are open is has reached that top ten several times this year, which is fantastic. Um so it's always great to see that we get a significant amount of hints. I'm gonna say this is baseline, and we'll look at it for the upcoming year. Uh next year, I'd see the growth as well. Parent user university is extremely important for all of us as we continue to now develop from the S E L committee, but also ensuring that we have authentic resources for our families if they're unable to attend virtually, but they could continue to view it. And as this is a baseline of our typical attendance that happens, everybody's life, they're very busy. But as we know that our YouTube views continue to grow, so it's average sixty-plus, but that's they'll continue to grow. As we know on YouTube, things change. Sometimes somebody sees something, it grows like wildfire, and a lot of people want to see that because it's very important. So everybody that's contributed through that, through the communications is very thankful for that and that we have that for our families as well. Power School Parent Portal has only existed in our middle school over the past several years. This year will be the first year that we in our be uh communicated out that it's open from Diamond Lake through West Oak Middle School. So for our Diamond Lake and our West Gold uh West Oak uh intermediate numbers, those are baseline monthly sign-ins from families. And then West Oak Middle School is their monthly signs is seven forty-seven. So if you look at that, you see significant growth from our families from the Diamond Lake intermediate to middle school. So it's great to see and look at that each month. Um how we could continue to see that to grow with our families, because we want to make sure our families are informed, that homeschool partnership as well. And how, you know, it's just to make sure that we continue to grow those numbers with our families and they're aware of what that is and where it exists. And last but not least, how can our families know our students are doing academically outside of all the things we're communicating on a regular basis? We have our two learning management systems, Seesaw at Diamond Lake School, and then we have Google Classroom at West Oak Campus. And the numbers look a little bit skewed, but it's just really how they kind of utilize their numbers. So Seesaw almost documents every little action that does take. So if you look at that number, it's significantly huge compared to Google Classroom, which I find very interesting. So I'd utilize these as baseline data from the this year to next year on seeing uh how often those do change or if they stay pretty similar. But you say it's like apples to oranges in comparison, these two platforms on on that. But it's great to see these noteworthy metrics that are here, and it's always available in the monthly metrics report that I share. And it is always extremely important for us to always have continuous feedback. That's why we always survey our families. We don't survey for the fun of it. We survey for the purpose of giving continuous feedback from our staff, from our families as well. And uh these are up-to-date metrics from our parent engagement survey as well as our culture and climate surveys. So from our parent survey, we could see that we are, you know, we're we have a good A. We have a good A on both sides. If we're saying, you know, if you're a grade ourselves, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about standard-based grading, but as this here, it's like I would consider this an A for both of us here. And as we look at our resources from our parent side and then our staff side, I'd say that we're in a really good standing in different categories, and we look at it on a yearly basis. And if the board's interested, we have, I have executive reports on these that breaks down each question that gives you a good understanding of where our families are asking based off of um based off school and based off of uh the questions in each category. And that's all I have today. Is there any questions? Absolutely.
It's not really a question. It's just more of a comment. First of all, thank you as always for putting this together. I think it really puts uh visually to kind of see where the data is in regards to um to technology and what you guys are looking at. Um one, I just wanted to thank you for being proactive and in keeping up with things and not letting things get behind, because I think sometimes we sort of tend to often run things to the nth without really the forethought that they aren't gonna last. So that's one thing. Um and also the the idea of this responsible usage policy, um I just think it it really struck me because I think it really uh making our students a part of that process because they are global citizens and technology and um security and being aware of the internet and all, and not just the bad things, but just the structure of things um will help them in in their entire life. And it's not something that perhaps we had to think about as students, but um I think we're doing, you're doing our students a great service by making this part of just an organic process of being part of the school because they will take that on as they move forward. So I just wanted to um thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry, just to comment on what Mr. Hanson said about the survey results. So at the June eighth board retreat that granted you, we're gonna share all of our goals and priorities and the outcomes of each of those areas. And with that, we put together, Eric has put together a really nice summer executive summary of all the surveys we've given out. So that'll be included in that presentation.
Thank you. John, did you have any questions? I don't want to forget that you're on the phone.
No, no, I'm I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. App, it's it's collective. It's a community steps to all.
All right. Well, thank you, guys, for having us. We're really excited to go ahead and present about our student services department and what updates we've done and share some of the exciting data that we have for you tonight. I have Ms. Patty Rudd, who is at our middle school. I have Ms. Laura Rogers, who's at West Oak Intermediate, and then I have Ms. Karens, who is here at Diamond Lake School. So this year, we've made um some different changes to our department, starting off with really making sure that we have a structured data collection program using our curriculum-based measures. And we've been using STAR, but we've also been piloting our EZ C B M to see which one we really are feeling like is actually meeting our needs and being able for us to take reliable data that is helping us update our I E P goals and making educational and instructional decisions. In addition to that, we also have the support of our behavioral consultant coming in when we have a different degree of leveling of behavior, where the behaviors are really frequent, intense, and the duration lasts longer. She's been able to come in and give us some different supports and meet with teachers and staff to help them and really address the needs of the student so that those behaviors start to decrease. We also have done a full implementation of our universal S E L screener. And that's been wonderful because we've been able to really see what our S E L needs of our students are and where are those needs for instruction, where are those typical students following, and then where are those strengths are. And then it also helped us identify that we needed to have a tier-three S E L curriculum called intervention, and we were able to implement that this year to really hone in for those areas of need for instruction for those tier-three students for S E L needs. Then we also were able to continue on with our S F A D guidebook, which is our compliance factor, where we really have the ins and outs of procedures and protocols to make sure that we are legally compliant with federal and state guidelines. And we are updating that regularly because as everybody knows, that changes frequently and fast, and we want to make sure that that's up to date for all of staff. We also been doing um learning associate trainings uh once a month. We've been doing some late starts, and then we've been doing some after-school or before-school, depending on what the schedule is and availability is for the staff. We also added an awesome class here at D L S for our self-contained students, where it is a select group of students that really are needing a small intensive setting with specific uh special curriculum as well as behaved behavioral and sensory strategies that are implemented throughout the day to address all their needs. And we've seen some great outcomes there. And then as we've continued on with our I E P compliance, to make sure again that we are meeting all those guidelines. Currently, we have about a hundred and fifty-four students in the district that have an I E P. I always say currently because that's changed. Actually, one was dismissed today, but we're at, we added one yesterday, so we're still at one fifty-four. Um but we have about a hundred and forty-one of them inside our districts and about thirteen outside of our district in an outplacement in a private facility. We want to see that number typically under ten percent, and we're about eight percent. You're gonna notice that we have a larger number in our D L S population for I E Ps. Um something that is really something remarkable that's not typical is our E I, which is early intervention. It serves our students that are actually birth through free, and it's a state-run program that they get different services. It could be for speech, it could be for developmental delay, it could be for physical therapy, it could be for hearing. But we actually typically only get about three to four write referrals from them a year, and this year we've got fourteen. Yeah, so when you're looking at that, we had a lot more needs of the students, and my guess, or my hypothesis would be from the pandemic, that there's been more needs because those students weren't in preschool programs, they weren't being socialized, they weren't out in the community, so that impacted them, which then made a delay. So just kind of wanted to note that for everyone. Otherwise, for W O W S, we're about twenty-three percent, and W O M S were about twenty-four percent. All right, so data collection. Um so in February, we reviewed a little bit more about our STAR curriculum, I'm sorry, our STAR's uh curriculum-based measures and that we really started this in October. And it is a way for us to use short, researched, base curriculum-based measures to see how the students are doing and if they're making progress towards their goals, and if the curriculums that we are using are really meeting their needs. So we go ahead and give those bi-monthly. And then we meet as a team and review and make decisions and educational decisions and instructional decisions based off that data. It's been a great way to go ahead and see how our students are growing, and right now, we're at about ninety percent growth for all of our students that we are seeing with this data. Another way for us to go ahead and collect data is looking at the behavior. So we talked about the behavior consultant, we talked about different needs that we've had. Our behaviors have been something that has increased because of the pandemic that we've seen. So something that we do to help support that is we first do a functional um behavioral and and analysis or assessment. And what we do is we go ahead and we observe the student using data collection procedures and really look at that frequency, duration, and intensity of the behaviors. And then based off that, determine what behavior plan we'd make for them, what the target behavior is for that behavior intervention program, what replacement behaviors we have that we're gonna teach the kids to stop that target behavior. And then really the protocol for the whole staff to follow to ensure that we're all doing it the same way and meeting the needs of the student. So which is great is this year, we've had a hundred percent growth on all of our students that have behavioral plans. So we have three currently at D L S, and we've seen growth. Doesn't mean that they met their goal. It means that they're making progress to meeting their goal, which is awesome. This is what we want. How we go ahead and measure this is they have I E P goals that align to the behavior plan. And then we update that on every trimester, as well as we take different data daily to see how they're progressing. Are there a lot of interventions being on? Is there a lot of behaviors happening? What does that look like? And then looking at it. And then we usually meet about every six to eight weeks. We just kind of touch base to see if we need to go ahead and make some changes to ensure that we are still meeting the needs of the students. Then for D E S A, this is our universal screener. We rolled that out fully this year, and what's been great about that is it's a quick survey for our teachers to complete on our students. It's eight questions, and then it could trigger a seventy-two-question survey based on that eight-question survey if there's an area of need. And we've saw last time when we talked in February, a great growth, and I'm excited to show you again that we've seen another great growth where we've actually had a decrease in that number and instruction for need for instruction. And you can see the spring is that kind of golden rod color. We've had a decrease in our typical and then increase in our strength. So overall, it's great to see and exciting to see that that what we're putting in place is meeting the needs of our students. Now we turn it on over to Mr. Rogers.
You do not need exceptional, do you? So our um special ed team, we have um increased inclusionary practices, which is amazing. Oh. I bet it air. Um we are increasing inclusion. We look at our I E P minutes and our guidelines, and we're promoting continuity. Um we increase student time in general education. We have increased time and social opportunities with peers, which is important. Um we are also looking at data, and we're making informed decisions to support educational needs. Um we are reviewing and adapting district-wide services. We developed our blended pre-Ks class. We increased inclusion services for resource teachers, developed self-contained K-two classes. Um and then we are in the middle school, tailoring instructional middle school classes and doing the co-teaching. Um so the inclusion services, what that looks like is a special education teacher would be inside the general education classroom. And the special education teacher will be meeting the special education students' needs by working with them on reading, math, and writing. The benefits for this is the consistency and routines and schedules that are with their peers. Um and then we have a decrease in transitions. And that helps with any of the students that have any behavior needs and those triggers that can happen. Um we've also, obviously, if they are decreasing the number of transitions, then they are increasing the instructional time, which is what we want. We've also, obviously, if they are decreasing the number of transitions, then they are increasing the instructional time, which is what we want. For our resource minutes, this is when I would take a student into my classroom. And I would teach them in a small group, even one-on-one setting. I would really be focusing on some of their needs. These students typically have pretty large gaps in reading, writing, math, and those functional skills. The benefits are their direct instruction, the small group, there's, the distractions are decreased and the increase for the student focus. And we're just really focusing on what that student needs.
So as it was discussed, we created two new classrooms here at Diamond Lake. So the first one is a blended preschool, which is our little diamonds early learning program. These two classrooms, the teacher is certified both in special education and general education. And the students in these classes are mixed. So there's Gen Ed mixed with those special education students. The benefits of this program so far is that these students are with their Gen Ed peers throughout the whole day. So they're playing outside, they're intermingling. The next one is pure role models. A lot of these kids, this is their first time in school, especially for like the three-year-olds. They can look up to those older ones to see what is expected of them at school. How to play with each other, just different role models. And seasonal learning is occurring throughout the whole school day. They have those opportunities. And then the biggest thing is probably that we're teaching diversity and acceptance at a young age for them. The next program is actually my classroom. So it's a self-contained classroom this year. In that classroom, I do have a learning associate to help support with those. The student population is mixed. So currently I have two first graders and three second graders. They are within my classroom for all of their academic learning. They are included with their grade level peers throughout specials, lunch, and recess. So they do get those learning opportunities with their peers. Since this classroom this year is based on behavior, so the benefit of this, it's really allowed us to focus on, to provide more intense and direct instruction on those SEL needs. My students this year, they've been able to share their emotions, tell me why they're upset, work through that. Since the beginning of the year, it's a huge improvement. So it's, you can tell that it's really working for them. The curriculum that I provide is modified and adapted to fit their academic needs, which allows them to feel successful, successful and proud. They want to show you, they want to take it home to show their parents. They're excited. And then the students in my class were able to create meaningful connections and relationships with not only myself, but with each other. So we're a quaint little family in our classroom.
Hey, at the middle school, we have two models that we follow. The instructional classroom, where the certified special education teacher does small group instruction, but follows the general education curriculum. A great example of that is seventh grade was reading I Am Malala. And Mrs. Verdino, actually, that's the Lincoln chasing Lincoln, but Mrs. Verdino was able to purchase I Am Malala modified for instructional students. So that's really beneficial to have those resources. The benefits of the instructional class is it's a lower stress environment. You see increased student participation. Oftentimes in the general education class, your special education students aren't comfortable participating. Teachers follow the students' instructional leads while it's highly structured, but they're still following the curriculum of the general education teacher and a built-in behavior management system if necessary. And then we also have a co-teaching model at West Oak. And before I talk about it, I have to shout out Mrs. Scolar. She is our co-teacher guru, that's a good word. She's been at it quite a few years and I'm getting back to it this fall and I will definitely be leaning on her. So and her two co-teachers, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Lozano. So in the co-teaching model, the special education teacher and the general education collaborate. They teach lessons as a team. When you walk in, you shouldn't be able to tell who's the SPED teacher, who's the Gen Ed teacher. It is instruction for all of the students. So the general education teacher can work with the SPED student and vice versa. They adapt the teaching for all of the students, so everybody benefits. And they provide differentiated instruction. The benefits are improved academic performance, increased support for the general education teacher from the special education teacher. Strategies and study skills are taught, increased emphasis on social skills, and it's definitely an improved classroom community. All right, take it away.
There we go. So then going forward, we're looking at what our next steps are for next year. And we really want to start to look at focusing some training on trauma-based practices. A lot of our students are coming back to us with a lot of trauma that we need to take into consideration and make sure that we are trained and ready to go ahead and address those needs and have the right educational tools in our toolbox to do so. We want to continue on with that SPED guidebook because again, like we've said, special ed changes fast, so we want to make sure that it's updated and compliant and that new staff and everyone is trained on that. We're going to continue on with our inclusion and making adaptations to our really continuum of services to make sure it's meeting the needs of our students by really continuing with co-teaching, increasing our time in the general education environment too, if we're not co-teaching but being an inclusionary teacher. And then we're going to add a self-contained class, actually at West Oak Intermediate, based on the needs of the students. And continue on with our one at Diamond Lake. And then we're also going to add an instructional social studies classroom at the middle school because of the needs of the students with their reading levels and comprehension to really address their needs and make sure that they're able to get the content, just like the general education students, but it's taught at a level where they're understanding it and have the time to really comprehend the information. Then for social emotional learning, we want to look at implementing something called Calm Classroom, which is a fast, really mindfulness activity that we can do to help address some of the needs of our students. And then we're going to continue on with Center Vention and continue on with DESSA. Any questions or feedback for us?
I know it's been said many times, but thank you for everything you do. I know how hard it is to, how challenging it could be to work with special ed. Kids and laws and rules and parents, and I know how hard and how many moving pieces there are. And I mean, I'm seeing, I know SPED numbers are going up and I think it's great how you guys are adapting and just taking on the challenge. So thank you.
Wonderful teams.
I had, I had one quick question. But also I did want to say, I really am looking at kind of the growth of the special education program over the last seven or eight years. It's amazing to see the strides that all of you have made and all the time that you've put into kind of meeting the needs of all the different students. And just seeing how it evolves every year. So I think, you know, I want to echo what Mr. Becker said and just say thank you. And I feel really proud and I think the district feels really proud of kind of the strides that the program has made all. And you know, that's really due to all of you and the other teachers. So thank you for that. I had one quick question for the trauma-based practices, which I think that's fantastic to have professional development. I wondered if in the future, we were considering rolling that out to more of the district too?
Yes, yes. I think we really were looking first to go ahead and start it small and get our specialized student or specialized staff more trained in it and then be able to start to actually expand and teach more. It was kind of starting that small piece just because usually the students that are being impacted the most are the ones that we are seeing on a continual basis. So if we can start to address that and then actually start teaching and doing that model outward, that's our plan.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, teachers.
That concludes our presentation. Presentations for the evening.
Okay. Then we will move on to our business agenda. We have three items for action. And the rest of the items are for review this evening. The first item for action is approving the omnibus vote agenda. The items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes. And the next item up for action is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires and two resignations. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
That motion is also approved. And moving on to our last item for action, which is approving the 2023-2024 board meeting dates. Whereas the Opens Meetings Act requires each public body to give public notice of its scheduled updates, times, and places for regular meetings at the beginning of each calendar or fiscal year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves their 2023-2024 calendar, allowing for meetings to be held twice a month at the Diamond Lake School, 25807 Diamond Lake Road, Mundeline, with the exception of the following months, July 2023, December 2023, and January 2024. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Yes.
That motion also is approved. The next few items are up for review. I don't know, Mr. Rogers, if you wanted to talk about any of them?
Always. So just a few items that, some of these are annual items you might have seen before. So the lawn care bid had a bid opening on May 8th. We would be recommending a new vendor. So Apex Landscaping came in at the low bidder. We currently use Countryside Landscaping. They do a fantastic job, but Apex has got really wonderful recommendations from the Village of Mundeline and Village of Arlington Heights. And it would represent a $5,000 savings compared to our current contract. So that is what we will be recommending at the June 6th meeting for approval. And it's a three-year contract with actually two additional years to extend if we so choose.
Did you want to, did anyone have any questions about that? Did you want to talk about the insurance rate?
Sure. So health insurance, we held an insurance committee meeting on April 24th. And we had a representative from each building that attended. So this is an annual renewal process that we do have allied benefits as our third-party administrator. And what they do is we're part of the Lake Region Benefit Cooperative. They'll look at our combined claims and our health within the cooperative. And what that cooperative does is it mitigates our risk in terms of large claims that we might incur. So we did have a very good claims history as a district. This has been prior fourth year in a row. We've seen very low claims and we weren't hit hard by any COVID-related high costs some of the districts might have incurred. So this year, they're recommending a 5.5% increase to medical and a 0% increase to dental. That's because dental was fairly static the entire time. So as a reminder, the, we're entering the last year of our negotiated agreement that has an 8% increase to the benefits the teachers receive. Insurance costs would be recommended to go five and a half percent. So teachers do see a two and a half percent savings compared with what they're currently paying. And as a reminder, the district did elect to, we constantly always look to enhance our insurance benefits. So relatively low-cost improvements we can do by saving money one place and trying to add benefits the other. Years past, we've added MD Live, which is an online insurance, you know, something you could submit insurance claims through, get medications, things like that. So this year, we did get a vision addition to our insurance where teachers can get a $300 reimbursement to hardware and to get a free prescription examination. So, you know, we should keep trying to enhance our, our pool of benefits that we can offer and track quality candidates. So that's something we continue again this year. And that again will be presented for action on June 6th.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Rogers? Okay. I think the treasurer's bond is self-explanatory unless you want to tell us about it. No? Okay. I don't want to cut you off. Okay, that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion? I don't. Okay, we did not have any FOIA requests. Moving on to notices and communications, we have the District 76 highlights.
Yes, so we have. Sorry, did we add this? It would just, the way it's looking right now is the sixth grade parent night. Is that added? It's not under highlights, just the way that it was looking. So I just wanted to make sure. I was making sure I was covering it correctly. So we've got some great highlights for the past few weeks. Sixth grade parent night, as you can see. It's a very nice YouTube video that you can watch. Nice 52-minute overview of what it's like to be a sixth grader. But you know, if you want to hear Mr. Peterson give a wonderful presentation, I'm sure that would be enlightening for all of us. Welcome, Mr. Petersen, to the board. We shared that out with our community a few weeks ago after you were sworn in at the May 2nd meeting. We had an amazing event, our second annual educator of the year for Lake County. There was over 700 people in attendance with over 30 school districts who recognized staff members. So the DLT put together a nomination and agreed that Dr. Berger would nominate Ms. Novotny. So she'll be recognized at the end of the year party too, but she was our District 76 representative. And last year, if you recall, they recognized school nurses. This year, they wanted us to recognize any exceptional repair professionals. So we recognize Pedro Clavio, Lily Gonzalez, and Marley Clauston. So again, we recognize some of our people. Picture of all them. So we all attended that at the Lake County Airgrounds last week. In Dr. Berger's style, as she always does, sent off a great formal kickoff and goodbye to the chicks that were staying at the DLS hotel for the past month or so. So you can see, you can watch that video and how they walked across the red carpet on the stage and they have celebrity sent. So that was very, very nice. And then something that I would like to share as that was new, Mrs. Hauptman. For those of you who don't know, Police Hauptman, married to one of our board members, John Hauptman, shared with us, and she's been always very actively involved in the community and sharing out information with us. And I know one of her kids is into promoting communications and public relations. Well, she stays in contact with us. And so she shared with us some great news of some of our alumni. That kind of triggered us. And then like a week later, we got that one of our alumni was drafted in the NFL draft. So Mr. Hanson, as what Mr. Hanson does, sparkle buys everything. And put together a great little announcement, but then also created an area on our webpage so that if there are people that want to share or alumni that want to share news of what they're doing, they can just click on that and share it with us. It'll get submitted and it'll be shared out. Just a brand-new feature on our website. And we'll also make a big kind of public announcement after this too, just to make sure that we keep it, you know, promoted and make people aware of how to share information with us. So I want to thank Mrs. Hauptman for raising our level of awareness and helping us celebrate our alumni because we're proud. And those are our highlights.
Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we move on to others. And we don't have anything specific. I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have, the next board meeting is June 6th, and then we have board training scheduled for June 8th. So if you are unable to attend, please let us know as soon as possible. Did anyone else have any others?
Something quick on being onboard training for CEDAL, a meeting with Dr. Dunne. I'm meeting with Dr. Dunne. And we've been in communication about finding a date and time so I can get trained on history and purpose of C-Doll to take John's place. So that's coming up the first week.
Great, great. Thank you. Anyone else have any others? Okay, then we will move to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and for student disciplinary cases. May I have a motion to adjourn to the executive session, please? Thanks, everybody.